Well, good afternoon. It is five after one, and we are now going to start the City Council meeting of Thursday, October the 20th, 2022, representing the City Council, Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the redevelopment successful agency, and this is our regular meeting. So with that, we are in session, and we'll call the order. Flag salute. Mr. Ryan will do the pleasure.
Please join me in honoring our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ryan. Chrissy Roehl, please.
Councilmember Downs?
I'm here.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Here.
Councilmember Weil?
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tim Kite?
I am so glad to be back. It's good to see everybody.
Thank you.
And hope everybody had a great time while I was out of town.
And Mayor Townsend?
I am here. Thank you, Chrissy. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is non-agenda public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to speak on issues that are not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes, three minutes per speaker. And Chrissy, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So for anyone participating remotely, if you would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda, please press star nine or raise hand on Zoom, and we'll start with our speaker card. Wally Melendez?
Good afternoon, City Council, Administration, Staff, in the city of Rancho Mirage. Back to my subject. My subject is that we need in the Coachella Valley a hydrogen fuel cell charger. We need it like yesterday because of the air pollution. Let me tell you a secret here. The air pollution in the valley, in the Coachella Valley, being that it's a desert, is more severe here than in many places I've been at. Number one, we don't get no ocean breeze because of the mountains. Number two, it is so hot and dry that the pollution coming out of the gasoline burning cars just sticks to the air. It sticks to your skin, to the inside of your lungs. So I've done research, very little, I confess, but we need somebody from the City Council, the Administration, the staff, to get a hold of this organization, and I brought it up before. It's called the California Fuel Cell Partnership Organization. And what I understand is that it's a state agency that pays for one half of the installation of a hydrogen fuel cell station. One half, which if the thing I hear is close to a million dollars to install that thing, which I think is overpriced, you know, that's only less than $500,000 that we have to put up. And we need it. Just, just yesterday, when I went to the grocery store at 6:00 a.m., the traffic was already humongous, and the pollution coming from that traffic was already humongous in the air. So let's get busy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wally, for your comments. Chrissy?
And there's no one on Zoom wishing to speak, so that is the last speaker.
Very good. Well, let's do that. Anybody in the audience who did not fill out a speaker card wishes to speak, would you step forward, please?
Hi, my name is Bruce Martinez, and some of you know me and some of you don't. So I'm just up here to thank you for tolerating, you know, some mistakes I've made in the past. Sometimes I'm not on my best behavior, but I'm a really good person. But I have a really funny joke to tell you. My uncle used to perform with the Rat Pack. He told me a time that it was Don Rickles and Frank Sinatra. They're in Vegas, and Frank got really mad, and he grabbed a bottle of ketchup and bam, he threw it against the wall. And Don Rickles said, hey, Frank, can you pass the ketchup? That was a pretty good joke, but thank you, guys, for everything.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Anybody else that didn't fill out a speaker card wishes to speak? Now's your time. All right, so you're none. We will close that portion of the meeting, and we will turn on to council member boards. And I'm going to start with Mr. Downs.
Thank you, Charlie. What I'd like to do is to speak to a couple of issues that we dealt with at the last City Council meeting. So forgive me for being repetitious, but I think these two issues are extremely important for quality of life here in the city of Rancho Mirage. So the first thing that I want to remind us all about is that at the last City Council meeting, we amended our contract with the, we approved amending our contract with the Sheriff's Department, increasing force from 35 to 39 officers. And one measure of how important this is, is that the County of Riverside standard is one officer per thousand population. This brings us to two officers per thousand population. So the single most important thing that any city council can do is take care of the public and respond to public safety issues. And so that's what we did at the last council meeting. I think it's important for us to review that one more time and to bear that in mind, and important for the people in this city to know that this council is serious about the protection of our citizens. The second thing that I want to again review from the last council meeting is the fact that we increased our turf rebate program to $2.15 million, which will result in about 1.2 million acres of grass turf transitioning to desert tolerant. That 1.2 million acres of square feet of turf that will be converted will result in water savings of about 70 million gallons annually. And one way to think about how important that is, is that it will be, we've certainly heard quite a number of comments about the Crystal Lagoon at Cuttino. That 70 million gallons will be roughly three times the water usage by that Crystal Lagoon at Cuttino. So I just think it's important for us all to bear in mind that those are a couple of things that we did at the last council meeting to preserve our quality of life in the city of Rancho Mirage. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good reminders. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Richard, welcome back.
Well, thank you, Charlie. No fixed speech today, but I did want to certainly compliment the chamber on the forum last night. Matt did a great job in hosting it, and Katie was there with her staff to comment on the various areas. So did a great job, had a great turnout, almost a capacity house at the library, and I think everybody got a lot out of it, and we'll look forward to the election. Don't forget, the election date is the eighth of next month. You do have time to get your votes in and make sure that they are the ones you want. So thanks for the chamber last night. Another great performance by the chamber.
That it?
That's it.
Thank you, Richard. And I will say, being there last night, it was wonderful for me, being on the other side and in the audience for change, and I appreciate it. Yes, they all did a great, great job. Very proud of everybody. Iris?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Steve, also, for mentioning about safety in our city and how important it is for any city. And we were so glad that we could pass the opportunity to have greater coverage and greater safety in our city. I wanted to also mention again that if you do have problems in your neighborhood, no matter how minor they may be, if somebody has a break-in into their mailbox, or if someone's mail is stolen, if somebody sees something that they are suspicious of, it's time to contact your local police and just let us know that you are finding some problems. Don't minimize it yourself, because all these problems, even no matter how small they are, are taken very seriously by our law enforcement. And I know we have cameras all over the city and all over the valley. There's very often a way of tracking automobiles that may be frequenting areas, and this is how a lot of law enforcement is successful in apprehending people who are causing problems. So please don't hesitate to call our law enforcement. Also, if you have problems in your neighborhood, don't hesitate to have one of our officers come out, speak to your neighbors. They're always very helpful. They're always glad to disseminate some information, and just let everyone know how much we care about your safety and about the safety of your neighborhood. So thank you so much, and thank you, Steve, for bringing it up again.
Thank you, Iris. Ted?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I would like to welcome and acknowledge one of our leaders for many years in the audience. Dana Hobart was a leader for many years of our, on our council, contributed greatly, and I for one am delighted to welcome him. And Dana, please stand up for a minute and be acknowledged. Thank you very much for being here, Dana. It's a pleasure to have you here. I will also echo what Richard just said, that the chamber last night at the candidates' forum did an excellent job. Matt Johnson was the moderator, handled it professionally. There were six candidates on the dais. Anybody that so desires can watch it on the Chamber of Commerce, the Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce YouTube, starting tomorrow, and so you'll be able to see the candidates for yourself. I think you'll find that we have a number of qualified people. I think that you'll see that there were frankly certain individuals that emphasized maintaining the quality of life for Rancho Mirage, and I think those people will shine. So with that, I refer you to the YouTube in the coming days. Lastly, about three weeks ago, I made a comment about a resort in the Bahamas where three in four people ended up dying as a result of this very dangerous CO2, carbon dioxide poisoning that has no odor, no warning, no smell. The irony is that one of my very closest personal friends here in Rancho Mirage, two weeks ago, noticed that his detector in his house, the light was on, and it was the light that indicated that there was a COD issue. He immediately called 911, and Cal Fire, who is here regularly in our audience, said to him, we want you to leave the house immediately. Anyone in the house, please leave. They exited the house. Cal Fire was over there literally within 10 minutes. I mean, it was very fast. It turned out it was not a COT, CO2 leak, but rather a faulty battery. But the point being, if there's ever a carbon dioxide issue, the most important thing for you is to get into the fresh air. And it triggered, for me, the importance of checking the battery life, of whether it be your alarm, your burglar alarm, your COT, CO2. Check it, make sure that it's up to date, and remember, if there is any issue, leave the house immediately. We subsequently, Kai, in our marketing department, did a video on the COT, CO2 issue. Well, that's a tongue twister for me. In any case, Kai did a great video on it, and it's a fair warning and a reminder, in this case, everything was, everyone was safe. So keep it in mind and pay attention to those warning signs. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Appreciate that. Last but not least, is me, and I will give my comments. I am very excited to announce that Desert Theaticals won last week eight Desert Star Awards. Desert Star Awards are given each year to recognize outstanding achievement in theater arts and those who have made significant contributions to the valley's growing theatrical community. Winners include cast members from Desert Theaticals 2022, Broadway in the Park, and 2021, the holiday show that took place at the Rancho Mirage Amphitheater. The winners are, and I do want to read them because I think they need the recognition, they do such a great job. First is Annie Get Your Gun for Outstanding Production of a Musical, Todd Markofi for Outstanding Lead Actor in Musical Annie Get Your Gun, Emily Anusha for Outstanding Lead Actress in a Musical, and Annie Get Your Gun also, Ray Lamone for Outstanding Choreography for a Musical for Mama Mia, Don Savage for Outstanding Lead Actor, One Act in a Christmas Carol, Georgina Medina for Outstanding Lead Actress, One Act in a Christmas Carol, Jonathan Hatzouss for Outstanding Supporting Actor, One Act in a Christmas Carol, and Dan Graff for Outstanding Supporting Actor, One Act in a Christmas Carol. Congratulations to all. What a wonderful job done by Desert Theaticals. Also, let me go forward with, this weekend, Desert Theaticals Cabaret Series begins Saturday, October 22. Valerie Perry will be at the Rancho Mirage Amphitheater, entertaining with classics from the Great White Way. Also, on October 29, David Burham, Broadway's award-winning singer and actor, will be performing at the Rancho Mirage Amphitheater also. Rancho Mirage residents can purchase general admission tickets for 15% discount in person at the Rancho Mirage Library. Proof of residency is required for that discount. Don't miss this great opportunity to see one of the award-winning Desert Theatrical productions, and for those of you who have seen this, you know you're in for a fabulous treat. So that ends my council comments. Appreciate the opportunity. And now we're going to move on to the city manager comments.
None today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar, and I will turn this over to the city manager to present consent calendar items and handle public comments. Mr. Isaiah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have seven items on your consent calendar for consideration. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is to approve the October 6, 2022, regular meeting minutes. Item number three is to adopt ordinance number 1195, second reading, adopting the Second Amendment to Development Agreement Case Number DA 190002 pursuant to Chapter 17.56 of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code. Item number four is to adopt Joint Resolution Number 2022, next in order, making findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54953, as amended by Assembly Bill 361, and authorizing continued remote teleconference meetings of the City Council and affiliated agencies and all other city-affiliated Brown Act bodies in accordance with AB 361 during the current state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Item number five is to adopt Resolution Number 2022, next in order, approving the Rancho Mirage Energy Authority 2022 Integrated Resource Plan. Item number six are contracts, and item number seven are demands, and staff is here to answer any questions. Before we go to council comments or questions, we will now open up the public comment period if any member of the public wishes to speak on one of these seven items. Now's the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would use the raised hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone, and I'll turn this over to Chrissy.
Thank you. I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who did not submit a speaker card but would like to speak? Seeing no one, and there is also no one wishing to speak on Zoom.
Very good. Thank you, Chrissy. Thank you, Isaiah. Turning it over to council comments. I'll start with Mr. Ted.
I don't have any, Mr. Mayor, but I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Very good. Before I do that, any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question on item six, number one, which is the construction of the underground facility. I was wondering if we could have a little more clarification on that and what has been approved in the past?
Yeah, Ryan Stendell, our Public Works Director. Sure. Honorable Mayor and council members, the item before you this afternoon is the installation, a request to install some water and sewer lines underneath Highway 111, generally and about the Rancho Mirage Library, to the vacant parcels to the, I'll say generally south, but on the uphill side of Highway 111. The City Council has a policy on file, and I want to read one of the findings. The council at that point said that installation of public infrastructure will help promote the general welfare of the city, residents, businesses, and visiting public, and contributes to the overall economic development of the city. So with that, the city staff is always looking at installation of public infrastructure, whether it be sidewalk connections, water sewer in this case, because all of the parcels vacant on the other side of Highway 111 are not served currently by water and sewer. They're bound on the east side by a storm channel, and they're bound by Highway 111. So all of those, including the existing VCA Animal Hospital, are either operating on old septic systems and patched water lines that don't always work. So with this, staff is looking to finish the connection under Highway 111, installing two water connections, one sewer main, which will aid in the development of those parcels. If you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Just a brief follow-up on that as to when that construction would be complete and what impact will it have on that side of the highway?
Sure. We're exploring all opportunities for, to streamline that construction period, including night work, including how we could get it done faster. It's about a 30-day to 45-day window for construction. It will be messy because we have to cross Highway 111. So we're looking to do it on non-peak hours, moving lane by lane, so that we're not closing down multiple lanes at a time on Highway 111.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Very good. And with that, I think we overshot the comments. So Chrissy, do you want them to repeat? I need a motion.
I got the motion and the second, but if you could go ahead and enter your votes.
Thank you.
And motion carries 5-0.
Very good. Thank you very much. Next is item number eight, reports and information items, Rancho Mirage Turf Rebate Program, and we're going to turn this over to Jessica Pullman, Senior Management Analyst, to present the report. Jessie? Hi, Jess.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable council members. The item that I have right now is an update for council on the turf rebate program. The city of Rancho Mirage has long supported water reduction, running two prior turf rebate programs in 2011 and in 2016. The most recently, council approved the current rebate program on July 7 of this year, and due to the high demand, has allocated additional funds to the total of $2.5 million to date. This is expected to result in over 70 million gallons of water saved annually. Under the current program, ran in partnership with the Coachella Valley Water District, the city provides a matching rebate of $3 per square foot for all residential Rancho Mirage CVWD turf conversion rebate projects, providing our residents with a total of $6 per square foot per project for living turf removal. It provides a $1 per square foot for all commercial HOA projects for a combined total of $4 per square foot. In addition, a direct rebate is available for up to $6,000 upon the completion of any HOA or commercial project that abuts a city street and is required to utilize a landscape architect. At this point, I'd like to play a short video that was made by our amazing marketing department. So let's go ahead and queue that up.
The city of Rancho Mirage has had previous turf rebate programs back in 2011 and 2016. However, the most recent program has shown huge demand amongst residents, HOAs, and commercial The city has continued to invest finances since launching the current program in July. The most recent addition, another $0.5 million allocated on October 6, which increases this program's total budget to $2.5 million. The Coachella Valley Water District says this program is helping the local economy and the environment. This increased budget would now see 1.2 million square feet of grass converted to water-efficient desert landscaping or artificial turf. That's almost 21 football fields of grass that have been removed. According to the CVWD, these conversions will save more than 70 million gallons of water each year. By working together, this program's made a positive impact to our community and saved water. The city has continued to invest finances since launching the current program in July. The city of Rancho Mirage partnered with the CVWD to create this program after the state recently banned watering of decorated grass at commercial sites, including HOAs. Residents that applied for the turf rebate program were eligible for a $6 per square foot rebate, with a max project size of 10,000 square feet for residential and 25,000 square feet for HOA commercial. Any commercial project where the city requires a landscape architect can be reimbursed up to an additional $6,000 towards the cost of a landscape architect. Those looking to apply for this program can do so by going on to cvwd.org. Click on Rebates, select Residential Rebates, scroll down to the Residential Turf Conversion Program, and click Learn More and Apply Here. Upon final inspection of an approved project, CVWD will provide the full rebate amount. An easy process that saves water and money.
This concludes, this concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to address any questions.
Thank you, Jessica. Appreciate that. With that, I'm turning it over to Chrissy for public comments.
Thank you. If you are participating remotely, please press star nine or raise hand on Zoom. I did not receive any speaker cards. Would anyone in the audience like to speak? Seeing none, and no one on Zoom either.
Thank you, Chris. Now it is council comments time. Anybody have anything to say? Richard?
Just one, one brief comment. This program is doing so well that it's influencing the other cities in the valley, and it's going to have a major impact on water usage, no question about it. But I'm really glad we're leading the way, and we've had great results, so should just keep up the hard work and keep the grass growing. So should just keep up the hard work and keep the grass growing.
Absolutely. Not growing, no. Or not as much or as big. I just went through that with Mission Point where I live, and we're talking about that as far as how to reduce the grass in our community. So that's the issue, but not all the grass in that community. That's the key. Thank you, Richard. Steve, anything?
Well, I think I used up my comments about the turf rebate program during council comment time, but I do want to commend staff on such a good job with this turf rebate program. It's remarkably important, I believe, to quality of life for the future of our city and remarkably important for water conservation in our future. So thanks for all the hard work. Appreciate what you're doing.
Yes, and a lot of that, of course, has to do with staff, everybody, Isaiah, all of you guys, that really field all the questions and all the negatives and then all the positives. And I did today at my meeting, said it was over $2 million. I were remiss, and it's two and a half million dollars. So for those who saw that interview, two and a half million dollars. Ted?
Merely to echo the fact that I believe that our city has recognized the importance of our sustainability in regard to conservation. We have more than fulfilled our responsibility, and I'm very proud and pleased that we're in a financial position to be able to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Iris?
And just a few words to let people know that it is such a remarkably easy process, working with the city and working with the Department of Water and Power, or CVWD. They're so easy, they're so accommodating, they come out to your home right away. I've heard wonderful comments, and the fact that payment is put in the mail as soon as possible and will be received also as soon as possible. So if you're thinking about doing it, don't hesitate, and it's a remarkably easy process. Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Isaiah?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a quick minute to thank our partners in this program. So the Coachella Valley Water District has been a fantastic partner with the city. You know, they've made this process very easy for the participants going through it. If you're a residential customer, it's pretty much all online. There are two other cities in the valley now that have copied this program in their city as well, which is fantastic. So I know that the CVWD staff is very excited about that. But what that has created is sometimes there's, can be now just a little bit of a delay by a few days where before we were really the only ones doing this. But CVWD is doing a great job. They communicate well with people. If you're thinking about doing this program, just remember it requires preapproval. So do not remove any turf until you get the okay from CVWD. There's still available funds in this program, so if you as an individual, property owner or business owner or HOA, there's still funds available. And I also want to acknowledge and thank Jessica for all of her work in this program as well. And again, if you're thinking about this program, the whole process is handled by CVWD. CVWD works on the backend with city staff, so no double agencies to deal with. It is very simple, and people are doing their part. And this is, I think, from a local government perspective, you know, one of the great programs that I think we all can take some pride in. You know, you have multiple local agencies working together. So it takes a little bit of money from the city, a little bit of money from the Water District, and a little bit of money from the participant. And what we're seeing is over 70 million gallons a year saved in water. So when we work together, we can do big things. So thank you to the community members that are participating in this program. Thank you to this council for supporting this program, and thank you to our partners, CVWD.
Very good. And also, Isaiah, to you for really spearheading this and getting it going, and us being the first and the leaders and the best and the most wonderful out of the whole Coachella Valley. Thank you, Isaiah.
Isaiah, do we know how much money the Water District has now committed to the project?
Yeah, so essentially, the city's match is doubling the rebate. So just in our community, it's about two and a half million bucks, if we're at about two and a half million bucks.
Okay, great.
And I think I asked Jessica at the last meeting, this just runs out. There is no, at yada-yada date, it's over, right?
Yeah, so obviously, there's an application process, and the reason that we've had to come back to you so many times to ask for more money is we keep on running out because people are applying through the program. But the way the application process works is they go in, if you're a residential customer, it's pretty much all online. They'll give you the okay, you go do the work, and then at the end, they'll send an inspector out, do the final inspection, and then communicate with the customer, okay, here's your rebate, and here's when you can expect the check. So as they apply and as they get preapproved, that puts them in the order. And so city staff is monitoring that daily. And so as the Water District is preapproving people, they get on the list, and so we're monitoring the amount of money that is in the program because it changes daily as they bring in applications. And so much like we've done before, if we start to run out of funds in the program, then city staff will bring that to the council for a decision of do we add additional funds or do we let our portion of the rebates expire? So that'll be up to the council at a future decision.
Very good. It's a wonderful thing to know that Rancho Mirage has the revenue and the staff that watches our funds and be able to have this opportunity to give back to our community along with the other interesting and wonderful opportunities through COVID that we did. So congratulations to everybody that handles the books, looks at the money.
When you, when you drive around our community, you can see these projects going on, which is exciting. So Eisenhower, their campus, did several applications. One of them was right there on the corner of Bob Hope and Country Club. That whole hill and kind of down Country Club used to be all grass, and now it's beautifully landscaped and desert landscaped. So you can see these projects taking shape across our city, which is really fun to see.
Very good. And Mission Point is on the books right now. As, right, Jess?
I have not seen it yet.
Well, it's coming. They told me that today. So I'm very proud of them for doing that, too. So thank you, everybody. Excuse all the commentaries, but anyway, moving on, we are going into number nine, and it's Jessica again. Are you getting double time for this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This next update that I have is on Burttec and the new carts. So the time is now here, starting the first week of November and concluding by mid-December, Burttec will begin to update households to the new colored carts for trash recycling and organic waste. As a reminder, any resident that would like Burttec to recycle their old trash cart, please utilize the Take Me stickers that were provided in the letter mailed to each resident at the beginning of this month. If anyone needs more of these, they are available for pickup here at City Hall. Once you receive your new carts, you will begin to use them immediately, and don't forget to look inside your new kitchen pail where you will find complimentary pail liners, information on how to sort your waste, an entry form for a chance to win the Recycling Right All-Star Gift Basket in the January drawing that is valued at $200. And if you're lucky, you may find one of 400 randomly placed $10 gift cards to a local business. The city does have informational videos and resources on the website, and at this point, I will now share my screen and go through where you can find those. We'll just give IT a second to transition that over. In the upper right-hand quarter on the city's home webpage, you will see a Burttec cart update. So you will simply click on that button there, and it will take you to the main page. This is a dedicated page, and so on here at the top, you need everyone to watch this informational video. It has a lot of good information about how you will sort your waste. If you scroll down just past this, you will see the new calendar function. If you type in your address here, oops, I apologize, I'm working on a laptop, and it is a little bit more difficult. So you'll type in your address here, it'll pop up, you'll hit search, and it will provide you your new, it'll allow you to get reminders, but it'll also provide you your cart date delivery. In addition to this resource, there is also a game function where residents can go and play this very neat recycling game, the Ready, Set, Sort Rancho Mirage Recycling Challenge. And by going through here, you can just kind of test what you've learned to see if you know how you're going to start resorting once you get your new carts. So you would just kind of drag along, and you can test these different things, and if you put it in the wrong bin, it will let you know, and you can just kind of go through there and play that game, which is really neat. It's a good resource for our residents, and so I encourage everyone to go on and just kind of check this out, see when your carts are coming, and be able to go through that recycling game, get the resources there, and just know how you're going to start sorting your waste. In addition to that, if anyone has any questions or any concerns, you can always email me at recycling@ranchomarageca.gov. I'm also available by phone anytime. Just go ahead and give me a call. If you leave a message, I'll call you back. I also want to thank Burttec for just being such a great partner in this process and helping the city to meet the state requirements. This concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to address any questions.
Very good. So Jessica, do I understand that if I put the wrong thing in the, in the wrong container, it says, hey, stupid, wrong? How's it work?
It, it just makes a beep sound.
No, that, we are really into electronics, right?
I can stand next to you and say that if you want.
Good. Say this, it'll happen. You can come over to the house.
I was about to say, the staff could probably fix that up.
Very good. Let me just say another thing. Today at the Mission Point meeting of the residents, Burttec came out and was there and gave over a 20-minute presentation and answered the questions. So I don't know if people are aware that they can do this, and they will come out, they just bend over backwards to make sure that this program and everybody's there. It's an amazing, amazing thing, really. So with that, I'm going to ask for any public comments, Kristi?
Thank you. If you're participating remotely, please press star nine or raise hand on Zoom. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Okay, come on up and state your name, please.
I'm a new resident in Rancho Mirage from LA.
Well, welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. My question is really simple. It's on behalf of Thunderbird Villas. I'm just curious if we miss the pickup from Burttec, Burttec for compostability. Is there a place in the community that we can go and drop off on our way out of town? Because we have a lot of residents that aren't here full-time.
Thank you.
So with the trash in the city, almost all residents are on twice-a-week walk-up service. So Burttec will go where those carts are placed, pull them out, service them. So even if residents aren't home, their trash can still be serviced unless they're somehow locked in an access where Burttec can't access those. If there is any miss by Burttec, you're always welcome to give them a call. If you have issues or you have a repeat miss from them, please feel free to reach out to me at recycling@ranchomarageca.gov, and I will address it.
Is the program in existence right now?
No, we have not rolled out the new carts. We're not starting that until November 1st.
What's that?
November 1st will be the first, the first week of November will be when the carts start coming out in phases, and all residents are expected to have their new carts by mid-December.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and then, Richard, what I learned today also, that each resident or HOA is given a date, like ours is the 7th of November. So if you go online, you will find your date and ready for it. So that's, that goes that. Iris?
Just one comment, because I'd like to commend whoever came up with the game idea. People love games, needless to say, especially children. And I think this is really important for children to feel that they are also participating in how to recycle and how to put the right thing in the right barrel. So I think that it'll become more of a game for children. They'll take pride in the fact that they are helping the environment, and they're helping their parents. So whoever discovered that idea for having a game, it's great, and I commend you. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris. Any other council comments? Ted? Okay. Yes, sir.
So, all right, we are rolling out new trash bins to our entire community, and no matter how much outreach we try to do, there will always be somebody that was unaware of the change. So we expect that within the process. Burttec is ready for that, as are we. So sometimes, as elected officials, you guys get those emails before us. So just know that we have a team ready to assist people if this transition is a surprise to them. We have done numerous things for outreach. Part of our Burttec contract for implementing this law was specific outreach to communities. So, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned your HOA. So, you know, we're happy to provide additional information. We do have additional materials available here at City Hall about recycling and organic recycling, and all that material is going to be in the bins when they're delivered, which is why, credit to Jessica, she came up with this $10 gift card idea, is to encourage people to look inside their kitchen pail for organics, because that's where that gift card will potentially be. And what else is in there is all the handout material on how you utilize these new bins. So with everything that we're doing, we might have some frustrated people in our community, but you know what? That's just kind of the way it goes when you implement something community-wide, but we are here to respond to people as they need help.
Very good. And one more thing to dovetail on that that I learned today is, in that package, when you have your old gray, you know, drums that are there and you can't use them anymore, there is a sticker provided that you put on to that, and Burttec will pick it up and haul it away. However, if you want to keep that, you can keep it, put trash in there, but you have to put it into the new containers as, as it goes. Also, if you want to keep those containers, the old ones, and a few weeks later, a month later, you don't want them, stick the sticker on, and they still will take it away. So again, they are bending over backwards, really, and they're all there, including, now Jessica, was that your home number?
It was actually your cell phone number, Mr. Mayor.
You keep putting it on me all the time when I do that. Well, thank you, everybody. I appreciate that. And I think that covers that quite well. Next, we will close that and go on to number 10, which is the Rancho Mirage Festival of Arts, and Mr. Gabe Conning, Marketing Director, will present the report. Gabe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable counsel. We'll give IT a minute to bring up our PowerPoint presentation. All right, there it is, bright colors. Our Rancho Mirage Festival of the Arts kicks off in a little less than a month, so November 5th and 6th. And so, you know, this event is, this would be the 20th iteration of this event. It kicked off in 2000. It's been on a two-year hiatus, and one of the things, we took the marketing department along with our art curator and some of the team that have worked on this event for a lot of years, one of the things pre-pandemic we were hearing was, you know, the, the number of artists were, were less and less. They, they kept talking about numbers of sales, and it seemed that we were, a lot of the artists that were coming to this were the same that were coming to a lot of the other art festivals throughout the community and the region, even the street fairs, things like that. So this one was less of an exhibition and more of just kind of a sales prospect. So we thought, well, what's a way that we could make it truly unique to our, our, our resident base and then the visitors that come here and really utilize the amphitheater and the, you know, and the, and the Rancho Mirage Community Park? So a couple of things. This will be its 20th anniversary year. We've rebranded the name as the Festival of the Arts as opposed to the Art Affair. And this one is really invitation-only. So we've handpicked 30 artists. So really, the, the vision of this event, as opposed to capturing people that are on the circuit and kind of have their trailer filled up and they're selling their wares, these are grabbing artists throughout the local, high desert, even the region, getting them out of their studios and having them engage with, so this is much more of an outdoor art exhibit that you'll see, and it allows our chance, a chance for our residents to really engage with the artists, see what their inspiration has been happening over the last couple of years, kind of post-pandemic. And so this will be still the two days of the exploration in the beautiful outdoor setting. So a couple of things here, it's going to have a very boutique feel, our team, and the art curator has put an emphasis on the look and feel of the tents, on the look and feel of an expanded dining area, there's going to be a stage on the basketball court, there's going to be music throughout the day. And so you'll see art enthusiasts through almost every medium, multiple mediums. the day. And so you'll see art enthusiasts through almost every medium, multiple mediums of art, and a lot of even mixed media. You'll also see some art installations at the park temporary for this event as well. And so here, you'll see, if you've followed us on social media at all, what's happening right now through our digital media and through our eBlasts. We're engaging with a lot of the artists, introducing people that are going to be coming to a lot of their work. We had a couple featured artists that were local to the community. And so we did videos highlighting their work and detailing them. And so we're having a lot of interaction online with the artists. They're excited to come, get out of their studios, show their work, engage with our community. And then, and we're featuring them through a lot of our marketing efforts as well. We're also, there's going to be daytime musical performances. And then also, our amphitheater is going to transform into a jazz nightclub on the evening of Saturday. And people will be able to free-flow in there. It'll end, it'll, it'll, it'll start, the music will start just as the festival itself is closing down for Saturday night. And so here's some of the daytime musical performances, everything. And these are all handpicked, local and regional musicians that have a great following as well, which will increase traffic to the art festival. And then we're featuring the Goodfellas Jazz Band and the Amanda Castro Band in the amphitheater for Saturday night, which we're really looking forward to. And it creates more of a seamless transition from art festival into the amphitheater for this year. We're also featuring a lot of our local, local favorites when it comes to food and libations. So Babe's Barbecue will be out there, serving along with House of Pokie is going to bring, if you've ever seen their food truck. They have a beautiful food truck, so they're going to have their food truck out there. Lulu's Catering. We also have Stevo's Catering. Wally's Desert Turtle will be out there. And then the Wine Lounge and Beer Garden is going to be provided by the Ranch Mirage Rotary. Mr. Mayor?
Is this at 5:30 or when does this kick in?
So this is all day long.
All day long.
This is all day long. So you show up, you show up on Saturday, and it's all day. The food, the food and the beverage portion is available all day.
Any change at 5:30?
That's when the concert on Saturday night starts.
Drinking, food is over, or are they still going to be there?
No, these will still be available.
Good. Wonderful. Thank you.
And then here's just a little bit of a layout of the park. So when you enter through the park, like you traditionally have, we have two well-defined entrances. All the artists are going to be in the perimeter around. And then you have the libations and kind of the food and beverage in the center, all decorated very nicely, high-end. And then you have the stage over on one portion of the basketball court there. So it's not overwhelming the artist and the dialogue with the artist, but you have entertainment and live, live action kind of all throughout the day. And then this is just some of the media that's been going out here. Obviously, it's very colorful between the artists and the musicians that are coming in. But just a celebration, like we've always had, a celebration of the arts. It also allows us to create more of a musical theme because of our amphitheater and how much we do there as well. So very excited to kick the, bring this event back after a two-year hiatus, two-year-plus hiatus. So just wanted to bring that to the council because we won't have a council meeting prior to this event happening. So wanted to bring it to everybody's attention and invite all of our residents and guests to come attend and have fun. Available for any questions.
And what is the date on this again?
So dates are November 5th and 6th.
Very good. All right, we're going to go to Chrissy. Do we have any public comments?
If you're participating remotely, please press star nine or raise hand on Zoom. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Seeing no one and no one on Zoom, I also did not receive any speaker cards.
Very good. Thank you. Then it's going to come back to us. Iris?
I have one question. I have one question, Gabe. You talked about a fabulous jazz evening at our amphitheater. Will there be any charge for that? Or is that going to be free to the public?
Yeah, no, that's, that's for this year, that's free to the public.
Okay, sounds terrific. I see you've got tables and tablecloths all set up. This could be beautiful.
Yeah.
But when you finish with this, can you also give a little update, or maybe Isaiah can, in regard to our farmer's market that is going to be starting?
Absolutely. So yeah, so our farmer's market started October 7th. So tomorrow will be its third iteration of it. So it's been going very well. There's over 40 farmers, local farmers. So everything with, at the farmer's market has been sourced within 100 miles. So you've got a lot of eastern valley farmers, you have some in the, in the high, high desert, you have some that are kind of like Hemet area. And so I've gone, I went to the first couple, I had, I don't allow my wife to go anymore because she spent our whole food budget the first week. So my wife can only go once every two months. But, but yeah, it's incredible. So anything from flowers, fresh meats, vegetables, fruits, all kinds of curated candies and special baked treats. There's a coffee cart there, really cool coffee truck, there's a bakery. So like I said, there's knife sharpening, there's everything you could think of. And then in the next couple of weeks, once the weather cools down and the grass has completely come seeded in, there'll be free yoga and there's, there's live music there. So it's a great experience. So I encourage you, it's in our Ranch Mirage Community Park. So if you haven't checked it out, every Friday from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Ranch Mirage Certified Farmer's Market.
Thank you so much.
Ted?
I will say this, that in going there and talking to the various merchants, they are just delighted with the location and the amount of traffic that they're getting is considerable. And so they could not be more pleased. And it's only going to get better because they've only had it several weeks now. So I would encourage you to go there. It's a great place to stop, have coffee, walk around. I know, Gabe, like you, my wife asked, check out whether they have fresh eggs and so forth. It made a little dent in our wallet as well. And it's well worth it. Just a terrific spot today. Thanks.
Thank you, Ted. Anybody at this end?
Gabe, will we have any kind of award for the artist? Are we having any kind of judging as we've done that in the past?
Yeah, so, so that's forthcoming here in the next week. So we're just putting the finishing touches on the award process, which we're very excited about. We don't have it completely finalized today, but there will be an award. So there will be the commission. So I wanted to give a special shout out to our Parks and Trails Commission, who has really helped with helping kind of vet the artist and choose the artist. A special shout out to Haley Tice, who's been working tirelessly on this thing for the last two years, but certainly the last couple of months, night and day. And so, yeah, there will be a special tour with the art curator for the city council and the commission. And there will be a special award that we'll be announcing here shortly.
Now, I assume that a special award, if I remember the past, is the mayor's award? And I still be able to, I assume?
You're just, just under the wire.
Boy, that's why I asked.
Literally, literally, literally at the finish line, you'll be, you'll be able to, the mayor's award will just sneak in prior to the changeover. So yes, yes.
I appreciate that. And I'm also looking at that for under the wire, to make sure I can use my scissors on something else before I go into the wild boogunder. So, thank you. Steve, anything?
I'm just anxious to see what, what the finished product will look, will look like, given the fact that it'll be a curated and selected artists as opposed to the way that's been done in the past. So I think it'll be unique and different, and I'm looking forward to it.
Well, I tell you, this really answers the emails I get. We don't have anything free from you guys in the city of Ranch Mirage. Somebody should put out a list of the tens and tens and tens of things that we have, from the amphitheater to everything that is free in this city. So congratulations, Gabe, staff, everybody that works on this, everybody thinking out of the box, which is wonderful. It's greatly appreciated.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Talking about thinking out of the box, I was driving by our new park extension.
Yes.
The Wolfson Park. So is there any chance that we can have somebody give us a little update? Because it's moving beautifully. It's very exciting. It's going to be an addition that we're all looking forward to.
Hey, Ryan, you're being paged.
Okay.
We can't do that, Iris?
Yeah.
Can we do it? No?
You guys can't. You're not talking about, it's not on the agenda.
Iris, I'm sorry, it's not on the agenda.
Okay. All right. Well, so we'll backtrack and we'll wait until we can put it on the agenda. And
An update!
But an update. But for all those who are driving down
Well, we will put a reports and informational item on the next agenda on the Wolfson Park extension.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Okay. People keep asking.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And I'm sure Ryan has all good news, including the flagpole.
Okay.
Okay, everybody.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. I've been through a wonderful report. We did the council comments, and I think we will pass on to closed sessions. And I'm turning this over to the illustrious city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is one of those free events that the city offers, council meetings.
Very good, Steve.
So the city council now is going to recess into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 regarding the following cases, Vacation Rental Owners and Neighbors of Ranch Mirage et al. versus City of Ranch Mirage, Vacation Rental Owners and Neighbors of Ranch Mirage versus City of Ranch Mirage, the Hometown Colony DBA, the Colony Mobile Home Park versus City of Ranch Mirage. And the last case we're going to consider is unspecified since disclosure would jeopardize pending settlement negotiations. So those are the items we're going to be discussing in closed session.
Thank you, Steve. And it is five after two, and we are now going into closed We are now in recession, out of closed session, in session for the October 20th, 2022 Ranch Mirage City Council. And I'm going to turn this over to our city attorney to say what has happened in closed session.
Mr. Mayor, there was no reportable action taken in closed session by the city council.
Very good. Thank you. And with that, good afternoon. Thank you for attending. And we are now out of session.